Maybe it's gonna come back up. One haywire with it.
Up here again, the screen is colored?
Screen is colored. It should.
I had one more thing.
You'll stop?
Mike, you know we out.
Go ahead and record the audio.
Okay. All right.
All right, motion to come out of executive session.
To move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. And no action was taken in executive session. Item nine, back to additional business, Ms. Oster.
Ken, before we take up the first one, can I add one because this should be real quick?
Sure.
I need to add authority to pay a hundred dollar licensing fee to the Board of Professional Polygraph Examiners for Brad Lovett. He's in Sheriff's Department.
Make a motion to add to the agenda.
All right, a motion to add to the agenda by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign.
Make a motion, we approve.
To move.
Our motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Okay, Ms. Oster, back to item eight.
Yeah, discussion of road project, interroad extension, South Rankin Parkway, potential action.
Okay. That's, y'all familiar with that? That's, that's something really important. It's really important to get, to start moving on as far as the, the environmental study, the right of way, and the design and right of way. Couple of reasons, but one, one reason is that things are starting to get a little cloudy there as far as some things may could be happening, could create more expense to this project if things went on as far as some land changing hands and that sort of thing. So, I think that's one, one reason. As far as that time, you know, this, this is a really important project for that south end. We, everywhere else has avenues to disperse traffic and things, and we don't have those. And this, this, this road right here would cut your time down if you were around fifty-five, possibly thirty minutes to get around, as far as the time you went up, fifty-five to twenty, down forty-nine. That would bring traffic through there. Sometimes even more than that. But it's, it's got a lot of landlocked land on it that's gonna open up then for development of economic, development of whatever you want it to be. It's also connects to Gunner Road, which then would connect, you know, where Gunner comes out and goes all the way, gets four sixty-nine, so it's a thorough there from fifty-five, be all the way across if you wanted to come to Brandon, wherever, District Three, Airport, always to go through there to bypass some of the traffic that you constantly out there on the highway. But there's a, timing is important right now to try to go ahead and move and start on that, as it has been for some time. But it's even getting more, more important at this time to try to move on forward with it. So, I just appreciate the boards allowing us to get the, get this started. And I don't know what else really to say. I know if you're not familiar with the area, as I am, then you may not see some of the greatest needs that like I see. My big thing is you go into, you know, up your area down, you've got so many ways of moving traffic. Brandon area has, even though we all congested, I won't get me wrong, and as well as, you know, all areas are. Steve's probably, that way is probably more, well, he probably doesn't have the traffic. I mean, you got forty-nine, this is unbelievable, which, you know, they've actually started, actually working on it the other night. But this road will connect you from, from Byram, from, from Byram at fifty-five all the way to forty-nine.
I really think that it'll connect Clinton.
Sir?
I think it'll actually connect Clinton. I mean, this one, but Clinton's already in that loop.
That, that's right.
Coming from Spring Ridge Road.
That's correct.
Across to Byram. And it's I twenty.
So Jared, you want us to move forward on doing the environmental, the, by the right of way?
Well, you gotta do environmental, you do have to do the, uh, design, they get right of way. That point right there, to go and have that locked in.
That was, I mean, that was the same fundamental reasons we did the Arctic Road to, to the south. I mean, it's to alleviate downtown traffic for Florence. When y'all did, when y'all did the Bondi eight years ago or ten years ago, and y'all put these roads out there, that was one of the fundamental reasons to do Arctic Right.
It's helped a lot, yes it has, and opened up for development.
Hey, did y'all do, see this is, we never have gone through any kind of formal process to say this is a kind of a major, what I call a major road. Gunner Road was on the, the agenda for eight years ago, part of that DLS. I think we all have been on Andrew Chapel, and that's why we kind of think that maybe Andrew Chapel is deserving of a major reconstruct. My problem is, we never have really gone, I mean, prior board has taken on the Southwest Parkway. They've been torched, they said they wanted to do it, but y'all didn't find out that last part of the Bondi, so we didn't get done. Am I kind of right about how that project worked?
Same way as, same way as Andrew Chapel.
And so I don't know how y'all came up with that conclusion eight years ago when you did the Henderson Road, and Baker, and when you made, what that criteria was to say, this is what we think we need to do, you know? And so I'm, I'm, I get what you're saying. Uh, I'm not crazy about keep buying right of way, we're, we're doing Gunner, and you haven't even did the project yet, so we have no idea what cost that is. And Andrew Chapel, we don't know what, we ain't done right of way on yet, we don't have no idea, have we? We done any right of way on yet?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry?
We started, yes.
Okay, so, you know, that's two roads you've already started buying right of way on, and now we're talking about buying right of way for third road. And I get what you're saying, because prices just keep going, just keep escalating, you know, and you end up paying more, but, so.
Timing is really important on this road. Timing, timing, the timing now is, is important to, to.
How, what's the distance on this road, Ken?
Running three miles.
From, from Florence by, to where we tie in?
From the, uh, from forty-nine to Gunner Road.
Right.
All the way to the hallway stop, and Florence by Road and Clearing out there, because that's, that's a state aid road from there out across the bridge to, to buy it. So that's where we're tying it, that hallway station.
And we're not talking about, too, this, this road is not a bunch of little bitty parcels. These are larger, larger tracks, you're not going to deal with a whole pile of, you know, homeowners.
I've asked you this question, you used to make a comment that, that Southwest Parkway will connect into Gunner, which will help moving on up to four sixty-nine, onto three, up to eighty, whatever. And I don't think, are we not setting ourselves up for a, a, a problem? There's not homes on Gunner. If you're talking about creating commercial, commercial traffic actually using this one, once we get to improving Gunner Road, and you put a high speed, what is it, forty-four, twenty-eight feet wide, hey, you been on Gunner? Twenty-four, you know, you're inviting commercial traffic up Gunner Road to potentially use that as a shortcut.
The biggest, the biggest thing it's gonna do is give you, if you're, if you're in Florence right now, and you're in any kind of large vehicle, truck, you cannot get to fifty-five unless you go all the way to Richland and cut through one little portion that you still get through in Richland to get to fifty-five in Byram, or either you go all the way around. I'd live it nearly every day.
Well, I think that's what Bob was just asking you, is basically, we're gonna be inviting commercial traffic.
No, that's not what I'm saying. If you build this road, then, no, you build this road, then this road will allow you to get back and forth through there.
That's what he's saying.
I'm talking about.
No, he's talking, he's talking to others.
I'm talking about the continued.
Yeah, you are inviting commercial, this, with this road, that's the whole point.
Well, now the, okay, I thought you were talking about the, the, the parred Gunner that's already existing on that side of forty-nine.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah.
I say, yeah, I get, I get Jared's point.
What are you saying?
See, I'm saying, without, with this road, I'm just giving an example, this road here would allow you, uh, commercial vehicles to get from fifty-five to forty-nine, or fifty, or forty-nine to fifty-five without going all the way around
Right.
uh, Jackson, all the way around forty-nine to twenty, and then up to fifty-five.
I think y'all are both saying the same thing.
No.
Florence, but I guess it's, but Florence by, is that state aid?
Yeah.
Like you can, you made the comment, and, and I don't have a problem per se, but if we do that, and we build a, I, I assume, a really nice road, we live on two lane or four lane?
Two lane.
You gonna have enough right of way to do a four?
We buying the four lane buildings too.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, we're gonna create, the GPS folks are gonna pick up on it real quick, and you're gonna see Florence by Road pick up a hell of a lot more traffic, commercial traffic, and then, and that's our deal, that's our ability to, to maintain. And so you're looking at probably a major improvement to Florence by at some point as a result of doing Southwest Parkway, because it's a domino effect.
This is overlay, just an overlay, it's already wide, you been down Florence by lately?
Not lately, no.
No, it's, it's a full blown road.
If we wanted to, could we put a weight limit on that road to, to cut down on the, uh, commercial trucks?
You have the right to put the weight limits, Steve, the problem has always been enforcement.
Enforcement.
It will always be enforcement, until we address that little.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a sign.
Should've come up with overlay district.
This, this is gonna be just what West Rankin is right there in Pearl, and where you, right there in Pearl and Flowood, and, and help, in a little version like you got East Metro. I mean, it's, it's opening up in turn and stuff.
And, for me, we may be getting ahead of ourselves, however, at this time, it's crucial, I understand what Jared's saying, with some monies that may be available, uh, if we, if we don't act, then those monies will not be available. And that's, that's really all I can say.
What have you estimated, Tim, uh, Greg, on, on right of way, environmental acquisition?
I, I asked him if we knew how many parcels we're talking about. I'm gonna need to know how many parcels before I can really give you the, the legal acquisition side. I can't give you anything until I know the parcels.
It's about thirty-six. Now, how many parcels?
That could be as few as ten, and as many as thirteen.
I don't think it's, I think it's more, I don't know where I get fifteen. And, and I didn't think it was that many, except there's a couple little parts here, but most of them are larger, long, wide tracks that are landlocked.
Are there houses, Jared, or structures that are close to where it's all?
Uh, well, the exact layout, I guess, final design has never been done.
Right.
But I can't think of maybe, one, maybe that old house.
Hey, man, you're not talking about construction.
Huh?
Potentially they are right at forty-nine, and there's, and I think some of that's in the state.
That's got, yeah, I think it's something to do with that.
One more, but I mean, in, in reality, there are vacant lands, and you can go across, maybe not, the straightest path might be here. Uh, right there at, at old forty-nine.
Right. In fact, the state has something to do with the house you're talking about, the Womack House. There was something in there, I don't remember where that was, but you remember one time? They got something to do there.
We're gonna be pretty heavily invested in Gunner, we're gonna be pretty heavily invested in Andrew Chapel, because those are large parcel projects. Gunner's over ninety parcels.
I wouldn't.
Andrew Chapel's over eighty parcels. That's two really big ones right there, comparatively. It's dangerous for me to say this. We're only talking about, you know, a, a fraction of those two part projects. Then you can just amount to the math. You get some idea. The closer you have structures on the road, higher your acquisition cost. The legal side of this is easy to do.
We don't have any, this one doesn't possess structures. That's, that's one reason I'm saying it's important to go and move forward. It doesn't, it, that's not happened, and.
Tell me, I couldn't hear you, Tim, tell me that again.
Hundred fifty thousand.
For the environmental side?
I'm thinking of number. I see thirty-six acres on your road. The part, the part on forty-nine, five percent is commercial, so you'll pay more for that. Rest of it's all. Real residential, cultural, a lot of that under there. Total, you're looking at total of environmental and right of way somewhere between three to five hundred thousand. Be my guess.
I think we have, we have the right of acquisition moving higher than that. I think so too, just to be safe. I was thinking the.
Is that all in what you're asking right now, Jared?
Around a half.
Huh?
Is that all in what you're asking right now?
No, I'm asking whatever they, they need, what they recommend to do.
Yeah, the package for all the preliminary and right of way acquisition, what we, what the budget number we need to give y'all was one point five.
That's everything.
Survey, preliminary survey, preliminary engineering, design engineering, uh, yes.
Is that, is that construction design, or is that just a?
That's, that's design engineering, yes, that's preliminary design, and then take it through design engineering for the two lanes.
Construction design then.
What if we just did the preliminary?
What, what would it be if we, right, at this time, if we just did the preliminary design and the environmental and the acquisition?
Can we do that?
Yes, the issue becomes the right of way, and I'm a little hesitant to commit to a purchasing right of way without a final design. And I think that's, that's a, that's a little bit of a risky take.
Do the, do the timeline, what comes first in this project?
Environmental.
Starting with, preliminary alignment first. You work that with the, with the environment.
You gotta figure out roughly where you're going.
You gotta figure out if we're gonna take houses, or if we're not, and where we're gonna go. And, uh, so you got preliminary survey, uh, involving that too. And then you walk through, and you get a preliminary design, and you work through your environmental, and preparing your right of way documents, and then obviously, as, as, at the end of preliminary design, we would feel comfortable to start the right of way process, the talks. And then you would get into your final design as you're going through that process. So then, final design and right of way acquisition, you can go hand in hand, in my opinion, just because a lot of people, these persons run away in the right place.
You don't wanna overbuy.
Right. So the, the, the final design, uh, you know, is, is gonna need to be, maybe not a hundred percent design development, uh, but eighty percent design where you can say, okay, this is the right way.
So the preliminary environmental funding, and that's what you're gonna do first, make sure I heard right. What is, what is, what, how long does it take to do that, and rough idea on the cost of those two issues?
Yeah, it's not, I looked at the aerial of the broke breakdown of them once, and I don't know why, fifteen stuck in my head.
Will we run into an environment, uh, put that in as far as a timeline, and we can certainly develop a timeline, but I think looking at about a half million for the right of way acquisition, then everything else would be up to that point, so. Without breaking down into fine numbers, a million dollars gets you to a point where you can acquire right of way, and you have it signed. I still have a detailed breakdown.
Tim, the design part is the engineering, uh, and who would do that?
Who would do what?
The design? That's where I was getting at. Can you help us here a little? I, I was, thank, thank you for bringing that up, Buster. It's, it is down there near your location, it'd take a lot of traffic off of if you was going to Clinton or Byram. Thank you. Well, good.
Good idea.
Good, good idea, I'm glad y'all brought that up.
My question would be is, I, I'm really gonna ask you, what timeline? I mean, as far as when you start, as you said, the board approved it today, so if I tell y'all go forward, you know, where will we be in July one of next year, where would you be?
We're gonna have preliminary design, alignment, right of way, uh, not right of way acquisition. Environmental should be done by July, with, you know, in that time period, you had your environmental, uh, where your ground would be established, and you would be into design, and certainly calling right of way acquisitions.
You're into, you're into the design, you know, you have, you.
And you're gonna be pretty fairly deep into the design, but not to the point probably where you would be in right of way acquisition.
Can, can we do something where we have a cap? We spend this much and we come back? You know what I'm saying?
I would, I would say like a cap on dollars, maybe a cap on, on, on services, on what, what they did.
Well.
You know, the preliminary design, environmental, you know, kind of see where we are, and see if urgency is still there like we think it may be, then we can say, shoot, yeah, man, this road, or something's has changed, and the dynamic has changed now, we need to pull back and wait and see maybe, or whatever, you know? Obviously, whatever we do, we always have for future, for future down the road when the funds become differently, and we have a different project, not project, but, you know, muff-ups, you know?
Well, what, yeah, but it, what, is a, you need to be able to lock in some things so things won't change on you. You know, let's say you do the, the environmental, and you do your design, but you have not a volume right of way, and all of a sudden, Joe Blow builds sales and stuck the house right in the middle of your design.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, in, in July, what's is used July one, that we get to July one and say, this is where we are, you know, maybe the urgency is not there as much, but we realize that, hey, it's gonna take, we're a little more, probably more definitive on the amount of money, it's gonna take to finish up to get where we need to be at right of way acquisition.
I know where you're going, but look, let me ask you this. Okay, where he's trying to go with, I think, in a circle, is if you had money to do, and, and pay, pay up to that point, and then come back whenever, June, July, whenever, and we're ready now to do the, uh, preliminary design. But you, you just said you can't do that till you know where your right of way's going. I mean, do your environmental till you know where it's all going. So I, I think what he's trying to say is, uh, what can we give you up to this point, and then we, uh, add to it after this point, like step by step, and I don't know if that's possible. I think that's what he's trying to.
I'm willing, I'm willing to commit to a preliminary design and environmental. I'm not committed to right of way acquisition, and for y'all to present construction, finalized construction draw. I'm willing to give the benefit of the doubt to move it forward to that level of the sense of urgency we're trying to get.
I don't, I don't see how you can do that, because you, I mean, what I'm getting at is if you, they're getting some things to change on the land, if you're not ready to go ahead and in there move it as far as the, who owns the property, and you go back then and be having.
I'm not prepared to go to a million and a half today, I just can't help but funny.
Well.
I'm not prepared to go a million and a half.
But you're not gonna, you're not spending a million and a half today.
What am I doing?
Can we?
You won't be spending it today.
Can we do what you're saying, and let them proceed, and if there seems like there's something in the horizon, immediate?
Fixing the change.
This fixing change matters, bring it back to us and say, look, guys, you've got seven hundred thousand tied up, and this guy's fixing, put this development in of these houses, and you're gonna bust right through the middle and buy them all if you don't do something.
Oh, what I mean, Bob, hey, Bob, what I mean, but you're not, you're not, you may be committing to, but you're not spending a million and a half now. That million and a half would be over, over, uh, a year and a half.
I just want the minutes to be clear, that we're not committing to the total budget at this point. I'm prepared to say.
Committing to the right of way and design of this project.
I'm prepared to do the preliminary, find out where it is, go do environmental, you know, and by that time, if we, if we think the sense of urgency's there, or, or a potential house, a potential subdivisions that's taking our way, then we pull the trigger quick, we, we can move, we can move quicker if we have to, if this board doesn't move, you know?
I don't know, I'm asking, can you do that?
I think so.
I don't know that, I, I, I mean, I'm asking them, they're the ones to do it, not me.
Yeah, I, I will, tell you why.
As far as the right of way acquisition, I can't really speak to that, but I mean.
Right of way acquisition's the last thing you do, right? First of all, for the big, big ticket item.
Yeah.
Big ticket item.
Well, that's, could we not get it?
I'm willing to go.
Get it all the way, can, all right, can you get it to the right of way acquisition part, where you'd be having to pay money?
Yeah.
Can you get to that point? Without, I mean.
And then come back to us and tell us where we're at, what things we're.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, can you do, do it that way? And get it to, okay, it's time to buy right of way?
Not to do what, what Bob was, he's already told us that, that they have to do construction plans in order to be able to get right of way. And so to get to be able to buy right of way, you gotta have construction drawings.
That's what he's saying, he's saying, he's asking, can you do the environmental, the construction drawings, and then, and then stop and come to us and say, this is where we're at?
And, and come back far the right of way, money.
That we have to do it right now, or?
Let, let me, let's put a little bit on the bone to help y'all see, from a, from a stating standpoint, what it looks like to acquire right of way, that sounds like that's just a self-contained little aspect of it. You go out and take the documents, you meet with the folks, and you get them to sign a document, and you hand them a check. It doesn't exactly work that way. The first step in right of way acquisition, after we get the legal descriptions from the engineers with the.
Survey plan? That goes through a title abstract process. And my, my title abstracter has to go through the records to determine who is the current owner of the property, and who are all of the interested parties to that property, which may include lending institutions, it may include judgment creditors, there's all sorts of aspects of the title that have to be run and determined. Once you have the title, that's a snapshot in time. That is the state of the title at that moment. And so you know, at that moment, you know who to go and visit with. If you do the abstract work, and you sell, and you don't go acquire anything, your abstract work gets dated very quickly, and then you find, you gotta go back and redo it. We've done that, by the way, with Gunner Road.
Yeah, right.
We had to go back and.
That's probably was from oh-seven, you know, to now.
Yeah, so unless you go all the way to the point of acquiring the right of way, you will inevitably have to redo some aspect of the acquisition.
Right, that's why we're where we are on Gunner Road to this day.
And that's why Bob was suggesting that we, at this point in time, move forward with preliminary design and environmental, to get us to the environmental stage.
No, you still gotta be able to, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's right.
Going through final design.
Right. What you don't need to do is, you don't need to get me involved doing title abstract work.
Mm-hmm, till you're ready.
Unless you're ready to move forward all the way through.
And that's what I'm asking, is there a point where can that, where can you go to that point? And, and even come back prior to maybe being right there ready?
Right, there, there is a point in the, in the design where we say, okay, we can make all of the physical attributes work. We don't have a set of plans ready to hand to a contractor, we don't have, if it's gonna be on seventy-five sheets and a set of plans, we don't have the eighteen of them printed out, and they may not even be ready to go, fine. But we know that the road will fit where it is, and it's where we did the environmental and so forth. So there is a point in the design where we would be comfortable saying, Mr. Slade, it's time for you to pull the trigger on beginning the right of way acquisition.
The only danger with that is the potential that you've got structures that show up in the middle of your design.
Mm-hmm, that's, but.
And you're gonna have a significantly difficult argument trying to convince the court that they did that purposefully.
Right.
And that it should not impact the actual value that you'll end up having to pay them. I don't wanna have to argue that.
Right.
In a, in an eminent domain setting. I'm not suggesting that we've been in a lot of those, but you could.
Yep.
You have to have a defined date certain that you are initiating the project. That is, that's gonna be a critical date for purposes of any eminent domain proceeding.
Uh, actually, they could for ten, I don't know.
So you can answer the question? I'm not sure. Did you answer the question?
Yeah. I, I thought I did, but maybe I didn't, if I didn't, that's.
So. No, we can get to that, to the stage that you're talking about, what Tim's talking about is the construction drawings won't be finalized, etc., but.
Which I think is what you're saying, you won't, you don't want final construction drawings. I don't, I don't want, I mean, I under, I understand the urgency we're, we're at, we're facing and stuff like that, but I think there's gonna be enough time, as you progress with your environmental and the preliminary draw, that we'll find out what this urgency's gonna play out or not, you know? And that may change our timeline, may change, may that change anything? Who knows, I don't know.
If we're moving, and we, somewhere around May or June of next year, I don't think we'll be ahead of that point by too much at, at all, really. And that would give, I think that would help us.
Even let a few more horses out there.
Even let a few more horses out of the hay.
Yeah, yeah, then we, yeah.
All right, so what can you do?
Certainly, I mean.
I agree.
We're not gonna keep it a secret where we are until July.
No.
I mean, so, I mean, every month, whatever, we'll, we'll be keeping the board abreast of where we are in the process. So, if, if, if there's something that, that we can't control, people building houses and all, but we certainly can, in our initial alignment, establish what properties they are and how long, I mean, I guess, uh, you know, how long they've been with the current owner and so forth. So, I mean, you would know some things about your potential route fairly early in the game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, okay, so what can?
How can we put that to a finish?
I can, well, we gotta prove. The thing, well, we gotta prove, know what kind of money we're talking about too, in that motion. But also, or something, I guess, if want to cover that, I guess maybe not, you just know what it, up to that point.
It's by, it's by itemized aspect of the project. What you've heard is, um, the layout, help me, Tim, layout of a route, right? That would be one aspect of it.
Establish alignment.
Establish alignment, uh, conduct environmental and.
Preliminary design and survey.
And conduct.
Preliminary survey, preliminary design.
All right, you got it.
All right.
Preliminary survey is, is flagging out the right of way.
Preliminary would basically be, if you don't, more establishing the horizontal alignment with vertical curvature and that kind. Basically, what we'll do is we'll go through and we'll just establish a rough right of way, I mean, a rough alignment. And then we'll go in and add curves to that and, and establish what would be a true centerline alignment for the road. So the preliminary survey is just going through and picking up the guy, hey, you know what? There's a thirty-five foot hill here that we really don't wanna cut through. We can shift over this way a little bit and totally miss that hill and not have to move that dirt. Or we wanna get that hill because there's a valley beyond it and we're gonna take the dirt off the hill and push it into the valley. So that's, the preliminary survey is gonna start to quantify that kind of thing, I guess.
All right.
Except for one area of this, there's really not, uh, it's actually good ground as far as high ground. But from what I know through those, through those woods.
That's all right.
Oh, that's.
That's, so you can take that in between now and the thirtieth, you can give us a qualify, is that what you want maybe at the end of the day too? A qualification on the cost, for not to exceed, or at least come back to us and say, okay, this.
Between now and when?
By, by the next work session.
A week?
I'm, I'm prepared, it's, it's up to then. If they want the dollars, y'all want the dollars or cents in, then they gonna have to go out. Otherwise, I'm prepared to go this route with what he's lined out. I think he's very specific about what y'all are talking about.
A preliminary design with, uh, layout for the road.
I need, I'd like to get it, and if that's gonna get it to where you, you then next try to get right away because that's where the problem's gonna run. If you don't, if you're not ready to pull the trigger on that, you're gonna, you're gonna wind up having to do some things all over again 'cause you're gonna wind up then having to redesign because this is here or, or.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna have the time difference we have with, with Gunner Road. Gunner Road got kicked because of the money. I, I don't think that's the issue here.
Well, it can be though, because the way land and property is moving.
But I'm willing to give you something here, you know, so, you know, I can't just sit down and say, uh-uh. You know, I don't wanna do it at all.
Yeah, I agree.
To, to, to move this along and see.
And I, but, and I appreciate it, but I'm just wanting to know, I want, I just don't wanna get to a point that we have, we're losing, we lose track, we lose ground because we, we weren't in a position to move, start the right away forward. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it's all about money. You know, you go back, better than I do.
Uh, it, it's, this, this is a part of the South Ragan Parkway and there will be potential federal dollars involved at some point, Jared?
I don't know.
All right, so, so what we don't know at this point is whether or not some funding that could be out there.
Well, it always could be, I mean, it could be something come through, anything, so that, that's true, that's reading the right away is important.
Well, I, I'm thinking about our experiences with the NPO and others.
That's what I'm saying.
Where if you don't have the right away in hand, you ain't eligible.
No.
So, that would be a concern. Is there funding mechanisms out there that are gonna have that as a trigger point?
That's what I've been trying to say.
And that's all fine and then you still, we have, we can't get to the, the right away acquisition until they do.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I just wanna be to the point where they, where they, we pull the trigger to go the right away. That way we're, in a sense, almost shovel ready.
Well, we're in the design now, we can say we're in the design.
You know, what I'm hearing, uh, from the timeline and from this discussion, it really doesn't matter.
That's, yeah.
Because this is gonna take.
Take, that's what I was getting at.
Many months.
It's gonna get you to the summer.
Before it's ready for me anyway.
That's fine.
It's gonna be six months.
And, and if they can do it that way, then that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So, you want, we want a segmentation or put these parameters in like this?
Yeah, you know, my thought is, we got preliminary alignment, preliminary survey, environmental and preliminary design. What have I left out?
Using the word preliminary design, I, I think to get to right away acquisition, you've got to get some distance into your final design. Not complete, but you've got to, preliminary design is, would be, uh, if, if it were an M doc project or a state aid project, you get first, the middle, the now.
Okay.
Uh, where you, where you, you really, you don't have, you don't have quantities, you don't, and, and you need to.
All right.
We need to get into that because there again, if it ends up being, uh.
Let, let me try again. Environmental, design, survey, alignment. What have I left out? Forget preliminary, what have I left out?
I think that's.
Environmental, environmental, alignment, survey, environmental.
Sales.
Environmental, I said environmental twice. Environmental, environmental. Environmental, alignment, survey, design.
Design, if you just said design.
Design.
Because before you can move forward in the right of way or anything else, you, you gonna have to have that design.
Road needs to be.
So you're going to.
And I go back to the fact that we're not gonna show up in July and say, hey, here's our final design. We're gonna be reporting to whoever, obviously, Jared's gonna stay in close communications because of all the properties involved. And, and so if we get to a point in the design, we'll let you know, hey, here's where we're gonna.
Yeah, so, so everybody understands.
So we, we.
Right away acquisition is to be determined. That's, that's a later discussion.
I understand that, and that's fine, we get to that point. That's what I, the whole time we're trying to get to. Get to that point and then that's when you step forward on the right away.
All right.
All right, all right.
I think I can.
I put that in a motion.
I can work with him.
Whatever you say.
Get that in the minutes, right?
One, one question I do have, since it was brought up, I'm not really sure where the particular funding may come. Does that impact y'all, what you do on the front end, as far as be it state aid, fed, whatever?
On some projects, it could, uh, because obviously, a, a local county road can have a different geometry than a state aid road or, or M doc funded road, but on a road of this magnitude, it's gonna be designed to those standards anyway.
Okay.
I mean, so it's, it's, it's really not, uh, the, the funding right now, that, that's gonna come into play, obviously, as you get closer to final design, how, how things look.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, if it is NPO deal that we do, that we do meet.
Right.
Sure, that would be.
Certainly, we're gonna do that.
All of that's gonna be match anyway.
Okay.
A bit of that can be subject to our match responsibility, whatever, if we end up in a situation where that becomes an issue, we're gonna get to count all that.
Right.
All right, so, motion as we got it now, Jared, you know what you're saying?
Whatever they said, it's gonna cover, whatever Craig spit out there.
Craig just.
Up to the point, up to the point, I guess it'd be up to the point of, of purchasing right away.
Up to the point of purchasing right away.
That's basically what you said, right? Ain't that right?
Yes, we're looking at pulling a million dollars.
Okay, so I make.
Right away that happens immediately.
Right, so we're looking at a million dollars.
I make a, I make that motion.
I'll work with Jessica to get the language.
Correct.
Way we want it in the minutes.
Okay.
But it'll be environmental alignment, survey.
Because you understand what you said.
Well, I understand what Greg put out there, so I make the motion.
You're right, I get all that and I still, yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I think I go.
I make the motion.
Did Bob, did Bob second it? I didn't.
Bob hasn't said anything yet.
What is mine spinning?
All right.
I'll get a second.
I'm thoroughly confused here, so. I, uh.
Was there a money, was there a money cap put on it? What, I mean.
I don't think so. I don't think they mentioned money.
Yeah, we, we kinda messed up Tim's plan today at Stanford. We're looking at the total budget and we buy track and now we park piece of the, so we don't, Jay's estimated a million, could we?
Well, basically, my thinking is though, that where we are. If we're getting to the point of buying right away, what, based on what you said earlier, we're at construction design. And the whole project you said was one point five million dollars and if just left by the right of way is five hundred thousand, so we're at a million.
Yes.
So you really hadn't cut it down at all? You just stopped at the purchasing, buying the land.
We just stopped it at the purchasing of the water and make sure that, you know, we move forward, that we either got funding or partnership or however.
Personally, I, I think it would be better to do the preliminary and not have to go to that extreme, but, you know.
I think the kicker is you can't, it, it's a moving animal, so you've gotta do some of this to get here, to here, to here.
That's what he's saying.
It's just a moving.
All the discussions we've had, that's what he said.
You get to a stopping point, but unfortunately, you get a stopping point of roughly the eight hundred to a million dollars.
So hypothetically, we do this and we're right back at Gunner Road again.
Potentially. And we ain't got the cost.
Either we, either, we spend all this money and either we move forward and build the project within the next two years or we're wasting our time.
They're not necessarily, because.
If we're gonna go all the way through construction.
If you got it though, but once you got it, you have it there and you've been there long enough to know when it's, there's, opportunities have come up and the thing that has blocked things is the fact you're not to that point.
That's true, yes.
And, and that's, that's where I'm going, so, no, if it.
I mean, I think the, the, the end, the, the kick on the front end is do we recognize this as a must need project? And if we do, I think the way we're approaching it makes sense, you know, but if we don't think this is a must need project, we're gonna kick it over right now. And if we don't need to have the discussion, that was my whole point. For the front end, I haven't been part of a discussion what constitutes a major reconstruct or new road. I don't know.
I think.
Y'all have the path still.
I'm gonna be, Bob, I would not, I would not be pushing it just to heck, for heck of building a road. I, I see the major impact and anybody down there will too. Would also, would agree. Uh, I think if you ask John Pat that live down there, they'd tell you the same thing. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't push it whatsoever that.
I mean, you bring up one point. We're gonna increase traffic from fifty-five to our, to our neck of the woods. Do we want that?
Well, you're not necessarily gonna increase it, you're gonna help the fact. Well, look, okay, if that traffic was gonna come around forty-nine down twenty, I mean, twenty to forty-nine and head south, that same traffic's gonna come all the way around, but this way it gets it through there quicker. It helps the traffic up here. It opens up so much and you could cut, you, right now, it, in fact, it'd help traffic 'cause you can't even get over to fifty-five one way or the other without going around in a, in a truck.
All right. Mr. Brady, I think, is it your machine?
All right, so, all right, so we've got, we got a motion by Mr. Morrison, Jake?
Yeah.
Second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All if they ever say aye?
Aye.
And you pose the light sign. Motion passes. That's very simple, we get back to it.
And while the camera, camera is on, I wanna tell you, thank you, everyone. This is, this is one of the best projects could ever be on the south end of Ragan County. I wanna thank you all right here, if anybody can pull it up here.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right, motion.
One thing that I would like to ask or just for, get some research on during our last election. Out of the sixteen polling places we had, thirteen of them had our results back within the first ten minutes. But we had problems with two of our locations that we should not have.
Two or three?
We had problems with three.
Three, yeah.
But we expected one.
Okay.
But two of them were not expected. One was at the Pearl Box, which has no communication issues at all. So we need to find out about this and, and get the glitch worked out now so that they'll work in the future. And not only that, we probably need to test this, you know, come up with some way of test, um, these machines for our next countywide election.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
I mean, it took.
It was, which ones was it, Jared?
Way up in the night.
It, McLarn was one and then the one that we expected to be, uh.
Cliff Ranch, uh, uh, Mountain Creek or Cliff Ranch?
It was the one that was expected to have a problem.
Star was, Star was the slow one, we didn't expect it, I don't think.
I don't know, but the election commissioner, Tanya, uh, she knows. And so, I just don't wanna drop that ball.
Off the top of my head, our agreement with our provider, provided for the school bond election to serve as our primary test. And I don't know that there is a contractual obligation that they have to provide an additional testing of any kind. We'd look at it, but I just wanted to.
Without, there ought to be some way that we can test it though, run a, just.
I'm just saying, if we need them involved in the testing, I don't want to expect that we, we've got them under a contractual obligation to provide that.
I got you.
They may wanna send us an invoice.
Well, I, if there's a method for us to be able to do it on our own, it, it would be nice for us to do it.
Okay.
And not only that, like I said, the two, the one, two to three that didn't work, yeah, I mean, we should've had no issues at all. So, so we need to find out what the hiccup was.
And look, we're just talking about what, yeah, a little, little small area.
It was sixteen box, sixteen precincts.
And it, uh, but it took, gosh, it was eleven o'clock.
Which I guess that was part of yours and part of Bob's.
Right, that's right, Bob, it was part of your district. The, uh, for the.
Runoff, I think.
There's, they venture over into you, three, I think three boxes over there. I didn't realize it either, yeah.
What is that runoff though?
Uh.
Two weeks, I guess.
Next week?
I'm trying to think the name of them.
It had to be next week.
No, they just.
It was last week, I believe. Unless they put it off that.
I got, I got, I can't, uh, I forget the name of them, son, but I recognize the names, they're over in your area.
All right, any, uh, any other further additional business? All right, entertain a motion to recess until the thirtieth. A motion by Mr. Moore. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All if they ever say aye?
Aye.
And you pose the light sign. Recession until the thirtieth, nine AM, thank you.